Getting cold and it's.
Oh, I could hear it.
Wow.
It doesn't sound very good. Thank you.
I've been drinking a lot of that liquid IV that seems to.
Help a lot.
But, you know.
I'm headed down to Florida tomorrow.
Oh, good for you. You'll get there and you'll get nine inches of snow again.
Nope, it's gonna be seventy-seven, seventy.
Where in Florida are you going?
Venice. On the Gulf of America.
That's funny. More updates.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. I think that's the first time I did it. It actually went right. It was still at where I was. When I was reading it. How you doing, Bruce?
Very good. What about you?
Good.
Yeah, I want some credit to turn it on when you get it.
See, Johnson?
Yeah.
You don't know what's gonna happen.
Another day in paradise.
Today I got, um, Josh, today I got the packet for, uh, the aquatics center.
Perfect, so you're ready for the meeting.
A week after the meeting, it's like. Let's see here.
You have this AI assistant thing that's on it?
I don't have it on here. I have it on my, at home.
I just can't get rid of the.
The little thing on there.
Do you have it answering your emails for you, Bruce?
What's that?
You just have it answering your emails for you?
No, it just started doing an AI box on the bottom of the screen.
I mean, I think it's a new Microsoft thing, I'm guessing.
Just can't get it off of there.
All right, I'll call the meeting to order at six o'clock. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, the next item up on the agenda is the approval of the regular agenda. Here is, Eric made a motion as their second.
I'll second.
Maggie seconded it. Uh, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item is the consent agenda. Unless anybody has any, questions, I would take a motion for approval.
So moved.
Sean made a motion as their second.
Second.
Bruce made a second. Uh, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. City engineers report. Is there one tonight?
There's nothing unless you have any questions.
They don't. Does anybody have any questions?
I haven't.
On the public, or on the engineers?
Nope.
Okay, we'll move on to item five, walled construction. Request going out for bid. Good evening.
Mayor and councils, good to see you. I will set up here. That's fine. Uh, the council, I think, has a copy of our presentation. In their packet, in your packet there, so we'll just, uh, go through that. Um, if you go to the second page in there, where we are at with the project right now, is we finished up the, uh, construction document phase based on, council action at the last, uh, meeting we were at, uh, which means that we've kind of worked through all of the final details and specifications, MEP systems, and the specifications for the project. So we are, uh, at that bullet point on there where we are ready right now to, uh, go out to bid. The diagram in there for the site plan is our current final. Do you want mine or do you want? Are you gonna scroll through? Okay. Uh, so the site plan that we have in there is our final, uh, engineered site plan for what's gonna be included in the project. You can see that we have some improvements along, uh, Fifth Avenue there where we are increasing the public parking, uh, for the police department at that location. Uh, we are, as we had talked about before, removing the existing garage that's on there so that we can create access for the squad garage to get out in, in a way that is separate from the, uh, public parking area. We are looking to provide a secure area, uh, on the site along, uh, the highway there for all of the, uh, police vehicles, uh, and also to give access to an outdoor storage area. If council recalls, we did, we are planning for the potential for expansion of the facility in the future. Uh, so that area temporarily will just be used for outdoor, uh, storage. Uh, we are, uh, showing in that area access to the ambulance garage and access to, uh, the outdoor space going into the break room for, uh, the police department. Uh, not much is changing. On the other end of the site, on the north end where the fire station is, we are maintaining access to all of the apparatus space and to the existing parking in that area. Um, and ma- making sure that we're keeping those circulation areas separate. As I said, there will be a fence al- along, uh, the highway there, so that is intended to be a decorative fence, but also providing security, uh, for that parking area. The next diagram in there is our current floor plan. This hasn't changed, uh, significantly from what we had presented to the council at the design development area, uh, at the de- design development presentation. Uh, as you look to the building, there will be a new vestibule and lobby area. We are providing a, uh, soft interview room at that location, which will also so- function as a safe room for after-hours access to the police department. Our, uh, offices will be along that side of the building as well for the administrative team, uh, the chief and our sergeants. The center core area will be where the patrol desks are for the department. We have a large, uh, evidence storage area, uh, next to the, to the main garage. And then, uh, on the east side, uh, Plan South is where our kitchen break room and storage areas will be. As we had talked about before, we are repurposing and remodeling the existing garage that's at the fire station for our defensive tactics, training area, our locker rooms. Uh, will be, also be in that area, and then we are constructing a new two-stall ambulance garage uh, on that east side of the building. The remaining images in the presentation are really related to the exterior design and interior design of the building. Uh, so this first sketch is where we were during our concept design phase, and we've really, uh, stayed true to, uh, that design concept that we came up previously. So this is a, a view from, uh, Fifth Avenue as you look towards the new entry to the building. Uh, off of Highway twenty-one, uh, this would be the rear of the building. So this would be the view as you are heading north on Highway twenty-one. Um, and then this concept sketch here is, uh, looking a little bit closer at that entry and connection to the fire station. So that, uh, area to the left of the new entry is the connecting link to the existing fire station, which will also be our way into the, uh, training space that's in that existing garage that is getting, uh, remodeled for that. Uh, the windows on the right side are the administrative offices, and then at the far end is the squad garage. As you look at the, uh, backside of the building, this is where our, um, entry into the squad garage will be. Uh, and also where the parking area, that secure parking area that I had talked about earlier, along with the entrance into the ambulance bays, uh, on the right-hand side of that image, looking, uh, north along Highway twenty-one. As we move into the building, much of what we've been working on with the, uh, police department is what do we want for the interior of the building? This first image is the public view as you walk into the building, and so our intent is to have a welcoming, uh, window into the police department that the public would be able to interact with the records team. Uh, we are showing some opportunity for some branding on the wall in that area, but our, uh, records team, administrative team will be behind that, uh, secure glass that we have at that location. Uh, as we move into the building, so this is after you've walked into that front door that we have next to the service counter, this is the open office area where our patrol area would be. Again, uh, we are looking to, uh, have, uh, simple but durable materials in the building. There'll be carpet on the floor, but most of the walls in there, uh, will be painted, uh, with just accent colors that, uh, kind of reflect the different areas within the police department. The far into the distance in there, you can see the glass that goes into that main meeting space, which will be the, um, briefing room and administrative conference room for the police department. Uh, this image here is the link between the existing fire station and the, um, main, uh, police department reception area. So this gives us access, uh, to and from the fire station, but also access into that shared training, uh, and defensive tactics room that we have located uh, in that existing garage area. Uh, this rendering here is a sketch of the break room area, so this just has some, uh, tables in here, but it also has some glass connection, not only from the outside, but into the patrol area, uh, as you look kind of to the middle of that image there. And then just a simple kitchen and bar area for the, uh, police department. And so with that, um, what I have for you today is just an updated budget for it. So we're still tracking very well with where we expected the project to come in. Uh, we're looking at roughly about, uh, nine-point-eight million in construction, uh, for the construction bid as compared to the ten million dollars that we had early in design and the nine-point-four million that we had at design development. Uh, we have, uh, adjusted some of the, uh, project soft cost numbers where we had, uh, construction contingency and design contingency in there to, uh, balance out the budget, which would be at a what, about one-point-three-five million dollars. Uh, and then the furniture and equipment budget at, uh, just a little over a million dollars puts us at twelve-point-two million dollars, which is, uh, right where we were hoping to be, um, prior to going out to bid. Um, so that, so with that, I would certainly answer any questions that the council might have, but we are interested in a feedback and also, uh, the council agenda for tonight is to keep us on schedule, which is to, uh, look for bids, uh, to put it out to bid here in February. Uh, and then depending upon where the bids come in and council feedback, this would allow us to, um, mobilize and then have construction start in the spring. So the timing of, uh, going out to bid right now puts us, uh, favorable, favorably in that, uh, winter bidding period, so.
How long is the bidding process?
Uh, typically it's around thirty days. And so, uh, and usually we require that the contractor hold those bids for at least, um, two weeks to a month, like thirty days. And so.
Pass that.
Pardon me? Yep, so it gives us time to vet the bids and then make sure that, uh, the council is comfortable moving forward. So we require the contractor to hold that bid number for at least thirty days, pending, uh, you know, after the bids are received.
So if they held, um, wh- so if you put it out to bid tomorrow, let's say we approve this.
Yep.
You're expecting bids back how soon? Is that thirty days to give them time to put everything together?
Yeah, so we'd be looking for bids probably early in March.
And then they would hold them for thirty days after that point through April, essentially?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
I just want to understand that.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
What, what does the SD budget, DD budget, and CD budget up here with the original budget?
Uh, so when we first started, uh, a few years ago, I think, um, we had a concept budget that was right around twelve-point-two million dollars. So this is just tracking it forward from schematic design through where we are today.
That's what those stand for?
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep, of course.
You mentioned a few things as you went through, um, increase in public parking and, uh, the building removal and, uh, decorative fence and other things, and you see the floor plan, uh, can change. And I know that in your comments, Josh, you said the staff reviewed it before tonight. So, uh, I'm interested in, was there any specific changes since the last time we've seen it that are notable that would have affected costs either increasing it or decreasing it since the last time we've seen this?
Uh, I wouldn't say significantly. There are some minor changes here and there based on feedback in the final design meetings. Uh, we have added a small evidence garage, so we added a couple of the walls in the main garage to provide a separate area for some evidence storage versus it being a fenced area in the garage is probably one notable change. Uh, we did talk about doing some, uh, additional, uh, paving where that outdoor storage area is on the site plan, just to provide some additional, um, bulk storage and vehicle storage and some of that type of stuff that would, uh, benefit the police department. But those were probably the two minor changes that we've made that may have had a small impact on the construction budget. But we do carry estimating contingency in the budget to allow for that detail to, um, be included in the project, so.
So the area that's marked outdoor storage that was not anticipated to be paved previously?
Correct. We, we had that. It's just a landscaped area or class five.
But certainly seems to be more functional if we do use it. Pay that.
Yep.
And then the, I'm sorry, the, the tech allowance, are we assuming we're gonna be, uh, wearing our own tech?
Uh, some of it, maybe not all of it. Uh, the, the current discussion with your, uh, tech suppliers, they'll do all of the low voltage cabling, security cameras, card readers, that type of stuff. Uh, there is some money in that budget to allow for some limited audiovisual stuff like TVs and, and CAD system monitors and some of that type of stuff, but those would probably be handled outside of that vendor based on our phone conversations with them. So we want to make sure we carry some amount in the budget to allow for that to be installed when it's appropriate for that in the construction timeline.
Thank you.
So I'm curious, there's only two evidence garage impounds? I thought one of the reasons we had such a big garage at first, um, and it was significant square footage, um, was because that there was no place to store impounded vehicles and whatnot. But yet, there's only two stalls.
So the, what we're showing as part of inside the building would be for a vehicle that is being processed, um, into evidence. So we need a secure area within the building to allow the evidence folks to be able to go through the vehicle and, um, you know, basically log everything in. For long-term storage, that would typically not be in that garage. That would be in a secure area elsewhere, depending upon the timing of what, you know, is going on in that particular case.
And then the.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And then the rest of the parking spaces are just for an expansion of police vehicles? To, to provide in the future the expansion, okay?
Yep.
And I think if you'd still want that shelter, you'd just leave it in a stall there and not in the evidence garage. You'd still use it in a stall?
Well, I'm still trying to get over where the need is. Um, so we have a police force of twelve, is that correct, Tim? Right now, our two technicians sit in the front lobby here, right? They're not in, really in the back area of the, with the rest of the desks and whatnot.
Yep.
So they're out front. And then at any given time, there's, on average, two police officers on duty. I know more on the weekends, less on other nights and whatnot, Sundays, for example, whatever, but, um, and they're on patrol. So they're not udi- utilizing that room. So who else is in that room besides maybe yourself during the week in your office doing some of the paperwork and stuff?
Well, depending upon the shift, they're up to four people working at one time. Um, right now, in our, our current office, we have, we have two office spaces. Uh, one is, one is, uh, office that I utilize and one we've moved in, uh, our detective into. So, um, our sergeants don't have a space to meet with their staff. With the addition of our new officer, we have one, two desks that are downstairs that aren't actually a part of our patrol area because you're, we're out of desk space for them to have a workspace. In the space that we have, sharing an office space doesn't work because there's enough room for two people to share. Um, so essentially, one of our officers volunteered to be downstairs, just to, is their workspace, so. When we have people in the office, uh, it is an open, it's an open area. So anytime anyone's on the phone, everyone in the office hears that conversation. Um, there's little to no security or, I guess, privacy, if you will, unless you're gonna go out in the garage and talk on your phone to someone or go out in the squad car and do that. So, um, we have one, one interview room right now, which holds our, um, our intox laser machine and our interview, interview room is, is in one. We're utilizing the parks garage right now for parking. So i- it, we've just come to a point where we're, we would love to make what we have work, but that's just not a feasible option. Now, we're out, we're out of space.
And I can understand that, um, chief, you know, and with the expansion of the police department in years to come, there wouldn't be any place to house the additional officers' equipment, et cetera.
Yeah, and I think we looked at that initially when, you know, can, can we remodel the space and make this space work in some capacity with, with walled and some of the studies that we did? And I think our, the general consensus was that we, we don't have room to expand or, or make this work, which is why we landed where we are here today.
Yeah. And I think the other issue that we're looking at too is that once that space, the current space is, um, you know, moved out of it, that there would be a possible expansion here for City Hall, which again is in dire need of space. Um, so it's kind of a snowball effect.
I just want to give a quick update. I know it had come up at the last meeting about potential bonding stuff.
Yes.
Dwayne, our mayor jerk, and I certainly did, uh, meet with some of our legislators here last week, so I just wanted to kind of give you guys an update on that. So we met with Senator Liski, uh, first, uh, there in the Senate building. When we broached the idea of both a bonding and of a police station, according to Senator Liski, he does not generally agree with the use of bonding bills, and he does not vote to approve, um, approve them. I don't know if he's done in the past or will in the future, but he said he doesn't generally vote to approve them. That being said, he does understand kind of how the whole process works, and he's willing to sign his name to our project if we submitted one. Um, but he, it didn't sound like he'd be willing to champion the project if somebody needed to stand up to support the final bill or to get it onto the final bill. Um, and then he also did just want to reiterate that he would ultimately vote to not approve the bill, but he would certainly help at least sign his name to it to get it on, um, through the initial stages. Uh, when we approached Senator Dreheim about it, um, he'd mentioned that his primary support for bonding projects are for water, wastewater, streets projects, your general infrastructure projects. Public safety was a second tier of support, but it generally landed just in that as a second tier. He explained the process would be to submit the information to his office, and he was willing to sign his name to the project as well, um, but also would, at least what I took, would not likely champion the project. He said if we were able to get on the list for consideration, um, which would ultimately require his signature and for others, uh, the project on the list would, uh, start the process this summer, which means it would likely be for the twenty-twenty-six bonding bill or after. Uh, when we met with Rep. Representative Steer, um, we actually had to meet with him in the cafeteria building. We had no idea the house building was under construction, and so the whole house staff are just basically in another building. Um, but according to Rep. Representative Steer, he didn't believe there was any money available for bu- bonding projects and that there were a ton of people asking. Um, but he did say we could submit details to him if we wished. And then ultimately, we weren't able to meet with Representative Purcell since the Democrat, House Democrats were not in their offices. Um, but we do have a meeting on the calendar this Wednesday. Meet with her, and we plan on, uh, showing her both the power plant and the police station and just kind of having a general discussion like we had with the other three. So I guess what I kind of took from that, um, was that while our elected officials were willing to do signature stuff, at least from what we talked to, I don't know if there was much support in championing to try and get the project across the finish line. And, uh, I do know when we talked both with Liski and Dreheim, they kind of stated that we wouldn't likely get more than six million, which is about half. They kind of figured that's, that or below is what we should ultimately be asking for. And so, yeah, that, that's, that was kind of the update from them. I didn't, I guess maybe, uh, Mayor Jerk has a, a different feel from them.
You're spot on.
It was certainly they, they felt more for water, wastewater, road projects certainly than this one, though. They were willing to sign their name, but it sounded like we'd have to do the championing ourselves to get the other signatures filled out and hopefully find someone that if push came to shove and they were trying to figure out where to make cuts, somebody to stand up and push the project forward.
Yeah, that's disappointing.
Well. It's only gonna get worse.
I guess my thing is, is, you know, until we know, until we bet it, we don't have, know the cost, period. We can assume all we want based on estimates. We could be way off. We could be right on.
Hopefully not way off. Hopefully not way off.
I'm, I'm hoping way off.
The other way, right?
Yeah.
So.
So, yeah, I guess tonight we'd be looking for, um, authorization just to move forward and, um, advertise for bids.
Advertise for bids. It's not a, it's not the end-all and.
Right, yeah.
Hope we would.
We would have to still get our financing in order and we haven't, in my opinion, come close to that.
I know what, uh, obviously the longer we drag this out, the more the costs go up, but, uh, you know, it's still an issue of a need versus a want, and I still think this is more of a want than a definite need.
I, I have to disagree with you.
I know you do. I know.
That's okay.
If you've walked through this space.
It's okay to disagree.
I do, but there's only, on any given time, four people that are inside that space. And I know it's not perfect and not ideal, but I'm still looking at what this is gonna do to our budget moving forward to our levy, and it's substantial.
Right.
And that's the biggest issue.
And we keep.
We heard from people last, a month ago, when the new statements came out or a couple months ago, that not only our almost eleven percent levy increase, but you add the county on it, and then you add the value of their homes, and people were seeing twenty percent more and some even more than that on their taxes due. So we're gonna have to get, start getting lean and mean, and unfortunately, to this thinking that it's only gonna get more expensive as we grow, um, we don't even know when we're gonna have to add another officer or two or five. Um, but to that thinking, we should, let's, you know, we should be building another water tower on the south end of town because eventually we're gonna need it and, you know, because it's only gonna get more expensive. I mean, that just doesn't, it still has to be a need, and I don't think we've reached that threshold of a definite need, in my personal opinion and according to a lot of other people. But anyways, um, you're right, Mayor, we don't even know where this bidding's gonna come in. And once we do get that number, then we can have city staff work on what that effect is gonna be moving forward and for how long, um, without everything else, including health and benefits and wage increases and compensation studies and everything else. But, uh, anyways, okay.
It's the cost of running a city, and last year we didn't have a tax levy because of an error. Um, so this year, yeah, it's a particular hit, agree. And the longer we wait and the longer we kick the can down the road, this kind of construction is only get, going to get much more expensive. And, um, I just, I feel that at this point in time, it is a need. The city is gonna grow, you know, based on statistics, and we are probably gonna have to add staff. Um, and we also need to attract staff. And that includes City Hall staff, which we have nowhere to go right now. So I would, uh, make a move to, make a motion to move forward with the bidding process.
Okay, there's been a motion made by Maggie. Is there a second?
Second.
Oh.
Okay.
You beat me to it.
Rick beat him. Um, second by Rick. Um, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Um, the next item on the agenda is the public's invited to be heard on matters not on the agenda. Does anybody want to address the council on any matters not on the agenda? Yes, sir.
Hello, uh, my name is Brian Paulson, two zero six Fourth Street, Southwest, uh, mayor members of council. Uh, only comment in the police station is our population only went up eight hundred people in the last ten years. So I don't think it's gonna explode or anything, but, um, I did want to come up here and just, uh, talk in favor of the, the chickens. I know a young woman talked up here a month or maybe more ago. Um, but it's gonna be springtime soon. I was hoping to see that on the agenda sometime, uh, soon. It'd be really nice. I know you all seem to be pretty, uh, in favor of it, um, and I know it's something that, um, I'd like to have my kid do, um, learn how to have chickens and, um, just to make a point, not roosters. So I know those can be very annoying. Um, and I know that, uh, I hope that, um, council member Wolf would support it. Now, you were in the, the Victory Garden, uh, tour that the Historical Society did, uh, which kind of goes hand in hand with, uh, having backyard chickens. So that's, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to address the council that's not on the agenda? Yes, ma'am. State your name and, and, uh, address, please.
My name is Taylor Broome and I live at six seventeen Fifth Street Northeast here in New Prague. And I also came to talk to the mayor and the council about chickens. I was so impressed with the young lady who came and spoke in December about the issue. Um, I had never really thought about having chickens myself until I heard her speak, actually. Um, however, being somebody who is naturally inclined to, um, want to be as sustainable as possible, um, and responsible as possible, I really took some time to do some research into the matter. And I am pretty appalled at how many, um, chickens have had to be euthanized, um, or just other, uh, issues. I don't know the proper term, I guess, for what has to happen to the chickens. But it's really raised, um, an issue with the fact that really livestock was never supposed to be kept in a commercialized environment like this. And it's really a spreader of disease. And so we're seeing issues like disease or manufacturing issues even, um, resulting from corporations filing for bankruptcy or not being able to employ enough people, um, to process the chickens, um, after they're killed. And it's, it's, well, it's been problematic as a lot of you know, because, uh, eggs have become a political issue and I never thought I'd see that happen in my lifetime. Um, but here we are. I think that it's a really good time to stop and, um, I don't know, give citizens the option to be able to be a little bit more sustainable. I know that this issue came up in twenty sixteen and ultimately it was decided that, um, residents shouldn't be allowed to keep chickens. But I think a lot has changed since twenty sixteen, um, with the bird flu that has really raised the cost of eggs and the cost of chickens. Um, and, um, just, I don't know, uh, COVID, I guess, and some of the shortages that happened around that time. Um, so I think a lot of people are a little bit more, um, like-minded of wanting to be as self-sustainable as possible. And really, um, I think a lot of people, you know, are okay with like not having roosters, like was referenced. And maybe having a limit on how many chickens are being kept because I think that's very important, like health-wise, um, that they're kept in proper space and that, um, you know, I don't think that anybody is wanting to like start a large manufacturing, um, when we're just like trying to feed our families and show them a little bit of a healthier way to live. But I think there can be a broader effect to the larger community, like excess eggs maybe going to churches or to other organizations in the area. And it just gives a little bit more of a community feel and reminding us that at the end of the day, we count on each other as our neighbors rather than corporations and keeping things local here. So I think there's a lot of, um, really beautiful things that could happen from chickens. And if we maybe had like a chicken council or a public meeting to address some of the ways that we could all really put, um, the right boundaries in place to make sure this is a, um, positive thing for everybody. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to direct, address the council in open form? Otherwise I'll close it and we'll move on to, the next item is amending the twenty forty-five comprehensive plan.
Yes, I'll give you a brief overview. Um, actually Bruce Ramers will help me out a little bit here too. So, um, when we adopted the conference of plan back in October of twenty twenty-four, uh, we knew we would have an amendment back fairly soon to the council for, um, the utility commission's water, um, system model and study. And they did, um, get that wrapped up and we held our public hearing with the planning commission on January twenty-second to review that plan. And ultimately the planning commission did make a motion three to zero, um, to forward that to you tonight for consideration. Um, and just as a reminder for any conference of plan amendments, um, whereas this would just be added as an appendix to the end, um, we do require four out of five of the council members to vote in the affirmative for that. Uh, with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Bruce. I'm just gonna put up a map out of the, um, water study here. Um, in a nutshell, it, it mirrors the boundary of the, uh, conference of plan that was adopted for the land use growth boundary. And that obviously goes up to the year twenty forty-five, but we wanted to make sure, uh, the sewer study and the water study match, um, that, uh, same planning boundary. So if you have anything else, Bruce, to add to that.
Yeah, just quickly, it was, it was actually good timing for this study to be done. Um, you, you guys were presented the sewer study a couple of months ago or whatever. And then, um, slightly behind that, we were able to get, um, Bolton and Mink to do the, uh, water systems study at the same time. I then presented those results to the utilities commission and then ultimately to the planning commission. But, um, it, it, um, it brought us our attention to some of what we need to be planning for here in the future. Um, just as the city grows and or its reliability of the water system. Um, it's pointed out a few things, probably we're, we're, the commission will look at in the next three to five years of adding some redundancy to our wells. Um, some of our infrastructure as far as wells and so are approaching a hundred years old. And, um, kind of a secondary part of the study wa- is ultimately fire protection for our community. It's been in the, in the news lately, of course, with California and their, their water issues with regards to fighting fires. Ultimately, when you have a, a community that's engulfed in fire, you don't, no matter what kind of municipal system you have, it's not gonna support that kind of firefighting. But nonetheless, it, it caused us to go around to our system and, and do system testing and to prove out what our, what our system is capable of. Um, and we're doing really well. So good news on that front, but, uh, if you've had a chance to look through the, through the study and have any questions for me, I'd be glad to answer those.
Uh, Bruce, what exactly changed from the first, what was in the original compass, uh, comp plan? Or did we leave this out and we're just adding it and we were waiting for it?
So I think the originally it was pretty vague in our, our first comp plan.
Yeah, yeah. If you're talking about like the twenty, uh, fourteen or twenty twelve to twenty fourteen iteration of the comp plan, um, I mean, we had, I think our water plan document from that point was like, close to twenty years old now.
Right. So it just gave us an opportunity, Sean, just to kind of look, not only, I'm gonna, in the utility side of things, I always say kind of that three to five years is kind of what we really look at. That has some real good meaning to it. When you look out twenty years, that's, that their crystal ball is, you know, trying to look out twenty years. Like you said, we don't know what New Prague will grow like then. Um, we're hoping that if it should grow like they're forecasting, um, that a lot of those costs will be, um, assumed by the developers in, in regards to helping us with infrastructure. Because I mean, when you talk eighty-five million dollars or so, those are big numbers in, in the end. Um, but as, as you'd work through that in a twenty-year process, hopefully you'd have a lot of developers that'll help pay for that infrastructure cost.
But I guess what I was talking about is the, the newest comp plan. Was there, did we have a version of this in there?
Oh, no, we did not. We were waiting to amend the plan. For this, we're hoping they would come together at the same time, but it took another couple of months.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't understand that.
Yeah, no, 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 I might not have said it, but it, very well.
I understood it.
Well, thanks. Such a good mayor.
Okay, any other questions on the amendment? Otherwise, hearing none, I would take a motion from someone offering resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty-five zero-two zero-three zero-one, amending the twenty forty-five comprehensive plan.
Second. And Rick made a second. Um, any other discussion?
Is it oh one or oh two?
Oh, one.
Oh, one. It says here, oh, what does it say there?
It's oh one on the actual resolution. The agenda says oh one.
I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong one. Sorry.
You're good.
Okay. It's a long document.
Um, any other questions? Hearing none, it has to be, uh, um, does it have to be roll call? So I'll do a roll call vote. Rick?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Jerry, aye. Sean?
Aye.
And Maggie?
Aye.
Okay, passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Next item up is the approving amendment to conditional use permit, uh, number C eight dash twenty twenty-four in variance for an outdoor patio pergola.
I do have a PowerPoint, but my computer just completely froze up, so we're gonna wing it. Um, we have a intermuse permit or, or, excuse me, uh, conditions permit amendment for, um, the building at eight twenty-five First Street, uh, southeast, which is a former smoke and fire. Uh, they're proposing to put a patio with a pergola, uh, out in front of the building, uh, between, uh, the building and Main Street. So on the north side of the building, uh, the property is a unique property. It has two, uh, front yards and that it abuts First Street on the south and also abuts Main Street on the north. So you've just got your two front setbacks as far as, uh, that goes. So they needed a variance for the pergola to be, uh, less than the normal, um, uh, building setback requirement of thirty feet to the highway there. Um, and then as far as the patio areas, they had a patio on the nor, uh, the east side and the south side of the building previously that, um, really had not been utilized, uh, much previously. Um, and they want to consolidate that all to the, the new patio on the north side of the building. Um, they will add a couple of, uh, overhead garage doors to access between the building and the, uh, new patio area. And they'll also have a, there we go, is a depiction there, and also have a gas fireplace on, uh, the patio as well. Um, the property is unique as far as the, um, variance being granted for that pergola, um, encroachment on the front and that there's a very large right-of-way, uh, between, um, the property and the actual roadway for, uh, Main Street there. Um, where you don't really have that throughout the rest of, uh, the commercial areas. You had further to the east, you have, um, you know, much wider roadway because of the trails and, and everything here. You can kind of see the, the green space between the actual sidewalk and, uh, roadway there. Uh, a couple of things to point out, uh, I think generally speaking, uh, there was no comment at the, uh, planning commission meeting other than we do have, uh, the representative from, uh, the restaurant here tonight. He indicated that it would be called, um, Brickside nineteen. And, uh, they have another similar location in Delano and look forward to, uh, opening here, hopefully in the month, month of March, I believe, indicated. And, um, I think that about covers it, uh, for that, uh, item. So, um, again, the applicant is here, um, if you have any questions for him. And then, um, we would look for a resolution to approve the conditions permit amendment and, uh, ultimately the, the variance as well.
Any questions for, for, um, Ken? Um, have they said why they didn't like the patio that was there?
Uh, very restrictive as far as area and let the applicant talk more, but, uh, the one on the south by the garbage can area.
Just state your, just state your name and address, please.
Yes, my name is Corey Vanderhoff, ten five fifty Little Avenue in Waconia.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, so, thank you. So yes, the, the current patio that's in the back, uh, two things with it. One, limited seating and the second would be ode garbage would be what you'd be smelling during your, during your meal. So by having it out front, we'd have obviously the entire building between dumpsters and, and our guests. So we're looking at being able to put a patio kind of out front. Obviously, the restaurant, um, as you know, is set back a ways from the highways. When you look at other pieces there, it's also kind of a nice way to get us some visibility out onto the highway for, for recognition and, and hopefully helping with, with our guest count and our sales. But, uh, predominantly the, the back patio area and that side patio area, they would not be used. They would be, the side patio area would really become, if it'd be used for anything, would mainly almost be a walkway, if you will, for our staff. But even so, I, I would see them still, you know, walking through the dining area out to the front as opposed to going around it. But, yeah, so the other side, some won't. We have a limitation of thirty seats with a parking space. So that's what will be out front is thirty seats and there won't be any on the other two.
It's all gonna be fenced in, so there's no gonna be, no, no way for somebody at the patio to walk out onto the, um,
Correct.
Um, with a, with a drink.
I would, I would have to, uh, go to our plans. It's either a forty-two or forty-eight inch, um, metal iron rail, if you will. And the pergola will have the four posts, obviously, those will be stone that will kind of have them veneered in up to the top. Uh, kind of go and coincide with what the building looks like, keep it looking great. And then, like I said, there'd be the, the rail in between. So, yes, it would, there would not be anybody, no kids or anybody being able to run out to the highway.
Rick, our ordinance requires that you have to go through the main entrance of the building, have waitstaff acknowledge you before you're seated on the patio.
Correct.
I like the idea. Um, can you kind of tell us how maybe you'll landscape around it? It's gonna be really visible on our Main Street and I, you know.
So the, the exact landscaping plan, so as you, as you look at the restaurant right now, there's a lot of outdated landscaping kind of along the front of the building. That'll be cleared out. You know, immediately the, the plan at some point in time would be if there's any additional landscaping that goes in there, it would basically be arborvitae, if you will, just to kind of provide some privacy for the guests when they're sitting out there so they can kind of have something. But, you know, we get three months of patios time a year in Minnesota, so we do our best to keep it as open as what we can. So it's not gonna be something that we kind of want to close off and make it feel like a porch. It's gonna be, feel very open. But if there's any additional, um, landscaping that goes out there, it'd be very limited, either very low line with some color. You know, think, uh, day lily type of thing. Um, and then if there's anything with height, it'll be the, the narrow arborvitae just so that we have that to kind of, you know, again, stop a little sightline onto the diners, but yet still allowing them to, to be able to see out.
Right, okay. Well, the only reason I ask is because when we allowed it at our brewery here in town, they dressed it up with some trees and along that fence just to blend it in so it isn't quite so visible and it turned out great, you know, so.
It'll, it, I can, I can tell you with the, the, the guy who is, I mean, he's my partner, but not my partner. He's the, the guy that owns the building that's doing it and he's nothing but doing things tastefully. So, um, it'll be, like I said, I would, I would call it minimal, but yet it'll definitely fit in with what, what the community is going to want to see.
Do we need to add anything to that, Ken?
As far as landscaping, I don't, I don't know that we do. That's, the reason we had it at the brewery is we had landscaping next to the parking lot, which abutted the highway there.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that was the reason that we did that. Around the actual, uh, patio area with the fencing, we didn't require anything additional for that. They did add a couple of trees, um, out in that area just on their own, but that was nothing that, that we required. But, um, so I, I don't know that I would recommend that at this point. And they do have obviously a number of trees that kind of line the parking lot as you lead up there, which again would meet our, our minimums and that's not changing. So that's my take on it.
Yeah, there's nothing, there's nothing coming out outside of what's up on the building. There's no other landscaping that's coming out.
Overgrown tree.
The monument sign that is there does have to be removed, so that monument sign will be removed.
No.
That'll be gone, but there will not, because that'll sit basically right where the patio is. Because as you can see on there, that's kind of right where the patio sits. It's not quite dead center of it, but it's awful close to it. So that monument sign will come out and, and won't be replaced. We'll have signage just how it is on the building. And then with the, uh, with the pergola, we believe that the garage doors and the light from the building and everything else will bring out some natural lights. At some point in time, there might, probably be some string lights that could put up there or something like that. But again, very minimal, very tasteful.
Your place in Delano, is that right behind Dave's Town Club there on that second?
Yes, Brickside Grill and Tap right next to it.
It's great. It was very nice, great food.
It'd be very similar to that.
Okay.
Yeah, I went out to the website to take a look and I liked what I saw. I also liked the idea of the pergola having the stone veneer. That'll dress it up very nicely.
I think it'll look really sharp. That was, that was Jerry's idea to, to do that. I think that'll be very tasteful and that'll look nice. You know, it'll add, I don't know a better word. It'll, it'll make the posts seem a little bit more, more substance to them than, uh, six by six.
The only thing that makes me stand back is that it's so close on the nature trail. So if everybody's in there getting drunk and you got people coming up and down that nature trail, especially kids.
If this restaurant runs anything like a current one, I don't, we don't really do the late night thing. We, uh, we have, it's more of a craft cocktail bar, so never gonna say it never, but nobody's ever walked out of there needing a ride. So never gonna say never, but nobody's ever walked out of there needing a ride and, uh, and getting a ride. But that's, that's not the scene we're going for. I'm not a bar that's open until one o'clock in the morning and, and doing that, that's, that's really not our, that's not our scene. I know the liquor license will run until then, but that's not the, not the scene that we're going for.
And it's more of a sidewalk along there than a nature trail, so, you know, so, you know, because of the commercial, the strip mall and,
Right.
and then the Hy-Vee and the gas stations and such, so.
Any other questions? Oh, go ahead.
Corey, are you the owner of JPV property?
No, that, that's Jerry Vlamink. I'm the, I'll be the owner of the restaurant.
Is Jerry the ma- majority owner of JPV?
Yes.
What is his last name?
Vlamink, V L A M I N C K, I believe. I write enough checks out to him monthly, I think, I should know it by now.
So Brickside nineteen will not be, there's not similar ownership between the two?
Yes, so I'm, I'm the individual owner for Brickside Grill and Tap in Delano. Then we also have a restaurant, Wilconia, called Vandy's Grill, it's out at the Island View Golf Course. And this will be our third location, Brickside nineteen, but it'll run very similar to, I mean, to, not to get too deep in the weeds in the menu, but the menu will be, if you looked at the website, it'd be very, very identical. Um, we've also, you know, basically looked at the town and think that there's a lot of room for pizza. So we do have a pizza oven bought and we're going to be doing a Detroit style pizza along with a thin crust type of pizza in the restaurant. And I, I foresee that being probably between twenty, twenty-five percent mix on a menu.
So you don't have any ownership of the property?
No, I, in, in our lease agreement, it's, my plan is in five years, which is what we did in Delano. So Jerry owned that when we were first there and then after the five-year timeframe, then I purchased that building from him and it'd be the same plan to do that down here.
The operating entity that will run this facility, would that be a separate company or is it the same as the other Bricksites?
Same.
Okay. And you're the majority owner of that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, otherwise I would take a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty-five zero two zero three zero two, approving amendment to the conditional use permit, number C eight twenty twenty four in variance, number V one twenty twenty five, outdoor patio and pergola.
I'll second. Okay, there's been a motion, a second.
Has, has the owner agreed to or at least seen these?
Yeah, he actually was at the planning commission meeting.
Okay.
Okay, um, there's been a motion, a second, any other discussion? Hearing no other, um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, the next item up is approving interim use permit, dog grooming.
Another PowerPoint for you. Josh is gonna help make sure this works.
Now I'm the real IT guy.
Yeah. All right, so, um, security alert, that's cool.
Oh, now you have a security alert.
All right, um, interim use permit, uh, request is being made by, uh, dog grooming business, uh, particularly named Fancy Bones Pet Salon and Boutique, uh, to be located in the former mill. Um, at, uh, one hundred Second Avenue Southwest. And we'll get right into the background here. So we've heard a number of requests for the mill in the past couple of years, but, um, mill closed back in twenty nineteen. Um, they have a variety of tenants that they are, um, putting into the interior of the building. Uh, a lot of it that is going in now is in the former office portion of the mill. Um, there are other storage, um, uses in the building currently and then, uh, the gun range in, uh, construction at this point. And then the north end of the building is still vacant, um, so there's still quite a bit of, uh, unused space within the building yet at this point. Back in twenty-three, there was a conditions permit and variance approved for that indoor firing range. And then we've issued a number of, um, interim use permits for exterior storage and a religious institution, actually, which would be, uh, nearly next door to this, uh, particular proposed use within the interior of the building. And then we had a couple of variances for a sign and a driveway as well in twenty twenty-four. So again, what they're requesting tonight is an interim use permit, uh, for the dog grooming business. And the reason for that interim use permit is that we have, uh, re-guided the mill property from Iowa Light Industrial to, um, what the cop plan calls downtown flex, which is actually a yet to be fully determined, um, zoning district. Uh, if you recall, the planning commission is, uh, running through the Unified Development Code, uh, throughout twenty twenty-five and we'll have those standards put in place by the end of the year. But in the interim, uh, we're basically reviewing uses as if they are compatible with the downtown district within, uh, the mill building and the former mill building. Uh, we're reviewing those interim use permits to have, uh, an end date until at which point they're zoned to the final zoning, which will be, again, some kind of a downtown district that, uh, we don't have created yet. Really, they're only looking to occupy six hundred and thirty-eight square feet, which is a former men's locker room, uh, area within the building. And, uh, would have one grooming tub and two grooming tables. And we'll put up some photos in a minute here. Uh, the planning commission did hold a public hearing at their meeting, uh, last week and they did recommend approval on a three to zero vote. Uh, so again, just some background, the pink color of the, uh, map there is the industrial zoning for the mill property. And then the, um, schematic next to it is the floor plan of the entire, uh, first floor of the mill building. You can see it's at the very, uh, west side of the building. So if you look at the mill and we'll show you the photo in a minute here where they added the ADA ramp, um, in twenty twenty-four, that, that's where you enter into the building where Faith Recovery Music is, uh, and another showroom for a contractor will be. And they're at kind of the back of that hallway. Um, parking has been approved through a previous conditions permit for both the, uh, gun range and users at the site. So, uh, that is all in order. Uh, they'd be required to have two of the parking spaces for the dog grooming business, which are provided for. Um, and all the tenants are, are meeting their parking requirements, even with this being added. Um, that you can see is a little more detail of the business there and that front entrance with the, uh, ramp that you can kind of see behind that gray, uh, Ford pickup truck there. Just another view as well, so, um, not much else to note as far as that, it's really internal work that they're doing. Um, here's some photos that were taken, um, uh, actually it's a bit farther along than that now. But, um, yeah, not, not a very large, uh, area, but, uh, former locker room just being converted into the, the dog grooming, so. Um, again, staff and planning commission recommend approval of the interim use permit. Recommend approval of the, uh, resolution with the findings included within that document.
I'll move resolution two-five dash zero two dash zero three, dash zero three, approving the interim permit for, um, parcel twelve, twenty twenty-five dog grooming.
Okay, there's been a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any other questions?
Yeah, I have a couple.
Yep.
So, um, where are we at on the percentage of that, where that building usage is now? I know this isn't gonna affect it very much, but.
Yeah, um, I think overall square footage of the whole mill and everything is like ninety-seven thousand square feet. And I think we're at like thirty percent, or thirty thousand maybe at this point.
Because I know we did, they're chipping away at, and I'm very happy that you guys are. I'm glad you're bringing that, having, bringing businesses into town and that you guys are being successful with that. But again, we're gonna be looking for that bigger plan, just so you know, and you guys kind of keep chipping away at it. And I can't remember what we set that at.
Thirty-five percent. We had a pretty big discussion at the planning commission meeting, um, in,
I'm sorry, I missed that, yeah.
last week. But, um, yeah, I made another request that we'll be seeing at the planning commission meeting in, uh, February here, so.
Okay.
More to come.
All right, good. Any other questions? Other, is hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Good luck. Okay, next item on the agenda is the annual community development reports.
Yeah, I can go over it in minute detail if you want, or if you have questions, we can go over that.
Let's take the big view.
Yeah.
I have lost my total packet and everything here. Um, so I don't know what's going on.
Matt's doing a good job.
Matt is doing a good job, I just, my computer crashed and I lost everything.
I got caught in an update.
Oh, did you really?
So Ken, I do have a quick question. I noticed that the law office, is that actually closing? Warson Goggins?
I had not heard that.
Well, I was just looking at the occupant status.
Oh.
And it looked as if it was, it's, I thought, I thought it said close at title.
There was a title company behind it.
Yeah, title company moved into that building.
Of course, now I'm not gonna be able to find it. So, da-da-da-da. Yeah, so it's on page one forty-four. And occupant status as of one nine twenty twenty-four is Warson Goggins. And occupant status as one twenty-four twenty-five, it says Warson Goggins, close.
That's clo- close that title, that's the title company that moved in. So it's Warson Goggins and that title company.
Okay, okay.
Yep.
It's called closed title.
Yeah.
All right, play on words, all right.
Um, so yeah, as long as we're on the business inventory, I'll, I'll, I'll just give you an overview here. And I apologize for the technical issues, so winging it a little bit here. Um, yeah, generally speaking, from year to year, um, it's kind of amazing how quickly, um, the changes in the new businesses add up, even when we track it monthly at the EDA meetings and, and look at that. But, okay, eleven new businesses opened in New Prague in the last year. We also had eleven new businesses opened last year, so very comparable to the year prior. Uh, we had twenty-six business closings and changes as opposed to, uh, twenty-three last year. And then we currently have thirty-one vacancies as compared to twenty-six last year. Notable companies that opened up were Scooter's Coffee Company, uh, or Scooter's Coffee out on their new lot on the east side of town. Uh, Style Revival opened in a vacant spot in the strip mall by Coburn's. Rusty Spoke opened after, uh, almost three years of renovation. Uh, Honey Lou Boutique downtown opened in a, um, Cedar and Sage location that had closed basically right prior to that. Um, and then Scott Equipment had a new office building that opened in the industrial park as well as Bishop Investments. And, um, we also saw the kickoff of the, uh, footings for the Ebert fifty-four unit apartment building. So those are kind of the main, um, new businesses that were in town. But we also had a number of closings. Corner Bar closed, Pizza Ranch closed here in early, uh, twenty twenty-five, Smoke and Fire closed late twenty twenty-four. Uh, but then some other changes out there, Mark Hart Jewelers changed hands, if you hadn't been aware of that. Um, CBF Racing did an internal expansion. Uh, the firing range at, uh, the old mill is progressing quite nicely. And then, uh, Mayo's doing their addition for oncology and infusion. So, um, again, a lot of activity, um, I believe, uh, I'll just hit the highlights on the business inventory or the, uh, permanent, permit stats for the year. We were at a fifteen-year high for public, uh, permits for public permit renovations, which includes, uh, Holy Trinity Church, uh, Falcon Ridge Elementary, uh, just to name a couple of, uh, more major ones for that. Obviously, uh, Mayo Clinic, um, expansion there. And then for commercial and industrial, we're also at a fifteen-year high for number of, um, permits, which includes a number of the businesses that you see on here for new and renovations and changes. So we've really kind of, I guess, picked up the slack in that, um, public, commercial and industrial permit round, because we've only had, uh, uh, ten new homes built for the year. Um, and we had only eleven last year, but, um, if you look at our vacant lot inventory, we're down technically to, uh, about twenty-four, uh, vacant residential lots, but those actually aren't even on the market. Uh, we're really right around a, a dozen, um, that are on the market for lots that you can go out and buy today and build a new home on. So, um, we have talked, obviously, uh, we have a concept, uh, plan in just for, uh, internal staff review from Keyland Homes for up to about a hundred and fifty-six new, um, single-family lots. Obviously have the apartment under construction here, so, um, and we continue to have, uh, other, um, multifamily, uh, developers interested in New Prague. So I think we'll see that, uh, residential end of things pick up a little bit too. But commercial, industrial, uh, we're, we're doing great. Value's been, been, uh, really good for the past year. So as far as that standpoint, that helps the tax base. And, um, we have, uh, one pending sale, uh, in the industrial park that we should get wrapped up here within about a week. And we did recently close on, uh, the other lot in the industrial park that we were working on with Bevcom. So Bevcom and Quality Flow are, uh, the two lots that have sold or are pending to sell in the next, uh, week here. And then we'll have one industrial park lot left after, uh, those two are sold, so.
Ken, I saw what looked to be soil borings and some utility flags on the north side of Coburn's next to O'Reilly's.
Yes, um, I can't give a whole lot of details on that yet because we don't have, uh, building permit in yet. But the owner of, uh, property up there is Heartland Credit Union. And without saying that they're gonna apply for a permit, it's likely that that would be for them.
I see, thank you.
To move out of the strip mall. But we don't have a permit.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for, for Ken?
Mine went down. No, no, I lost mine now.
Hearing none, um, we'll go to the miscellaneous portion of the meeting. Um, I'll go around the horn, Rick.
Good, um, yeah, I got a couple of things. Uh, last, last meeting, we were talking about the getting rid of them cars behind, um, uh, the one business. Um, this weekend, um, their overflow was huge. They end up using part of our lot park on.
You mean the, the truck parking lot?
You mean the, the open field area?
Yep, right where the trucks used to line up, that's where the parking was. And it, it was significant, so.
So I give you a.
If they want to do that, then they can cooperate with the other type of thing.
Yeah, so I give you a brief update. So as far as liquor license renewals coming up, um, police chief and I spoke with city attorney Scott Riggs about if any open, uh, nuisance violation, including vehicles and the like, can be used as a, um, triggering point to get, uh, that cleaned up before we would have the council renew. And he indicated that, yes, that would be, uh, what we, he would recommend that we relate to them. Uh, I talked to the owner, uh, on a couple of different occasions, most recently today, to get that cleaned up. Or we would not be recommending renewal of the liquor license for, um, I forget how many vehicles, at least six vehicles that were out there. Couple were under, um, repair, I guess you would say. There was also a repair-looking tent.
Yeah.
Yes.
Out there.
Yep.
Um, and I visited, uh, the site, I believe, uh, Wednesday of last week or Tuesday of last week. And, um, I was told today by the owner that they intend to have a couple of their tenants moving out and that they would hope by the end of February to have all of the, uh, vehicles moved off the property.
That'd be nice because then they wouldn't use, you know, the railroad, we made them rent it. So i- if, if they're gonna fill that baby up, then we're gonna have to. So that can be brought up again too.
You're saying their, their vehicles were actually on city land?
Yeah, that whole corner was pretty much taken up with overflow. I was very shocked, but.
Is it for a day or how long?
I don't know if they had a sale on chicken or eggs or something, but, um.
Oh, you mean parking?
Yeah.
For people parking, I see. Okay.
Um, second issue I got, um, I, uh, the mill guy contacted me, um, I believe it was Friday. And then we met this morning and, um, he said that he had called you and you and you. And he hadn't talked to you yet and he wanted to sit down and talk to me. Um, and he went over the idea of, uh, of his, uh, uh, his plan that he's got now. And basically what it's gonna be is a railroad car repair. And, um, so he applied for a permit today. Um, unfortunately, with the way zoning is, he's gonna have some di- difficulties. And, uh, me and Josh and Ken were talking, I mean, um, spot zoning really isn't allowed. So to rezone just that one little spot, um, it's gonna be difficult. Um, that's why when you guys were talking about the, um, um, that you haven't got that flux, um, everything down in details, I'm just wondering why we can't add something to that, um, so that, that business fits into it.
So I will say that for that, with the application just submitted, it does go through the process where it's gonna see the planning commission first and they will look at that particular item. Um, and then it, assuming something like, assuming if that were to be approved and were to go through the whole process, we'd certainly look at how that business flex zoning is crafted. Um, but, uh, yeah, I guess I, at this point, I will re- reserve my thoughts and opinions on that project until the planning commission has had a chance to see it, so that way we can make sure we work it through the process correctly.
All right, cool, then I'll just, I'll give my, uh, my opinion on it. Um, I thought it would sound like a great idea. Um, it's utilizing as much space as. Um it's utilizing as much space as possible. That ha- that has to be one of the hardest things to develop. Is that mill, you know, when he bought it, I, the first thing I thought. You know, that's two, three million dollar demolition. Um but he is slowly working it. Um so I I just, I I wanna cooperate with him as much as possible and um uh that's my point of view and.
Okay, Bruce?
My only comment, since chickens have been brought up a couple of times now, if we should put it on the agenda to feel out what to see, you know, some memories might. On it and then if so, direct staff to can, to look into it if we so desire.
Yeah, I mean, if that's something I'll say, if two city council members want, we can put it on a future agenda, otherwise I figured it would certainly come up during our. During the year here as we look to um kind of revamp our zoning code and hold.
You know, and I I would, I would be another council person to say yes, go ahead and look at that. Um I just wanna remind everybody that um when we did um outlaw yard birds. Um some of the guys opened their gates and that was, we had chickens everywhere, we had partridges, um.
What are you referring to?
When we first passed the um um, um when we stopped with the um chickens, um when I first got here.
They they were allowed at one time?
They were never allowed. Oh, we just passed an ordinance in twenty sixteen that clarified that they were not allowed in city lands.
But I I guess to get to that end, um we'll put it on the list to talk to you guys early, so that way we don't have to wait for that whole code rewrite. Um we'll make sure to jump on that and have those conversations sooner rather than later.
I would like that.
I don't have anything, do you?
No, I do not.
Couple of things. Um there's another piece of property behind Casey's that seems to have a lot of abandoned vehicles. And then there is a house on the east side of the C E C and I failed to get the address.
Yeah, we were stalking with that property owner.
Okay, alright, uh because there's, there's cars there. I think it has a tab from twenty twenty-two on it, so. Um the other thing is I was out walking and over by the high school and I saw a home. That had solar panels on what appeared to be, I'll call it a pergola for the the lack of. Anything else, but just like four posts and some beams across and I didn't. I thought we only allowed solar panels on roofs. I do. It's three zero six Art Street Northwest.
Okay, thank you.
Just a correction on that, weren't we saying no to the solar panels because we didn't have a um a s- a a shut-off switch? Um when the power goes out so that it, that there's no feedback?
No, they are allowed on on roofs only and then there are, there are stipulations in regards to that, Rick, that they have to have the safeguards. To make sure that it doesn't feed back into the municipal system.
I would, I would like to.
In place.
Yeah, and I would like to revisit that. The requirement for uh roof solar, because there are some homes in town that wouldn't be able to support solar panels. Um and we're looking at renewable energy, so if, I don't know how others feel about it, I mean. We certainly don't want ISOs, I get that, but I would like to look into it to determine if we can back off of the roof-only installation.
Yeah, I think we can add that to the zoning code list as well.
Okay, if you need another council person, I would be on that one too.
I mean, unless you guys wanna talk about that early, we can just add that to kind of the general list for the code rewrite.
I'd be okay with that.
That's it, Maggie?
That's all I have.
Okay, Josh?
Nothing.
Ken? Bruce? Tim?
Uh just real briefly to answer your question about the parking behind Casey's, we are working with that property owner currently to. Address that right now, so there is a plan in place for that. Ken and I are working with them, so.
Great, thanks.
And one question, because um it's related to yours, um there was a lot of outdoor storage with. On uh that residence right across from, right next to the property, right across from the property you're talking about. And it just signs on it that say free stuff and they got tons of stuff sitting out there. I don't know if that's outdoor storage or.
Monitoring that as well.
Alright, thank you.
Steve?
So as we look at our year-end financials for our pension plan for the fire department, um we would be looking to entertain having some discussions on a possible. Possible pension increase this year. I'm just curious if you guys would like to have those discussions like we've done in the past where it was, I think, uh the city administrator Sean, I think. Has been in on them and then the mayor and then the rural fire board. Um just wondering if you wanna go through that same type of process again this year. Um as we would look at a possible pension increase, being the fund could support it, um or if you would like to do it a different way.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah, I mean, my recommendation would be to do it that way and if that group feels like it could be brought forward, then we can bring it back to the full council for review.
I'm good with that.
Yes.
Can you both mention or or we were notified with the grants from from the federal government? Can you, can you, one of you talk to that?
Um so we did receive two grants, one is for radios, um. That, I believe the funding is available, because that's a state grant. I believe. The DNR grant for gear, the money is not available yet. But they're anticipating it to be available here in the next couple of months. We've been kind of waiting here for probably about six months for the money to be available.
I ge- I guess to that end, I know the police department has also received word, it was the the Homeland Security Grant, Ken? Right?
Yeah.
Um just that that potentially is on hold as well and we just received word today. Um about uh from MinDOT about the active transportation grant for the twelfth avenue sidewalk down here uh is potentially. In flux as well, so. Yeah, until that all gets worked out.
Is that, is that because of the legislature and the state with the MinDOT grant?
That because of the. Because of the federal free girl, yes.
So that might be really temporary.
Might be, I maybe, possibly.
If I go home and hold my breath, do you think I'll be alive tomorrow?
I don't know how long.
Uh Matt, or Steve, you're done.
I'm done.
I didn't wanna cut you off, nothing. Alright, I take a motion to adjourn. Second?
Second?
All in favor, say aye. I'll get it. Yeah, would you please?